Meeting since our students have returned. I think we're looking at the 10th day of school already. So well into the school year and very excited. It's been a great opening. We did welcome close to 30 new teachers to our team this school year. And so we're very excited about the new talent that has come into the district and the good things they're going to do for our families and students. We're continuing to watch our enrollment. As you know, we have been a growing district for several years. Mrs. McGiboney next week will give an update on enrollment and projections. So I won't steal her thunder, but just know that we are continuing to watch that very closely as, as we have throughout the past. Moving forward this week, a lot of excitement within the schools. All of our back to school nights are going to run. The majority, I should say, are going to run this week and the next week. Our high school, I believe, ran last week. But this week you'll see Charlestown General Wayne in the middle school, opening and welcoming families and parents to come in and get acquainted with the school. And then the following week, the week of the 15th, we'll see Sugar Town, Katie Markley and our 56 Center hosting their back to school night. So hopefully families will be able to take advantage. And I just want to say thank you both to all the board members at the table for all of your support, all the, the new positions, the attention to the budget. It really did make a difference as we welcomed our students back this year. I do think we had a, just a wonderful and calm transition. And I really want to thank all of our team members too, the entire Great Valley team, especially our facilities team getting ready, seven buildings ready, the district office. And I've mentioned before that, you know, we host hundreds of students throughout the summer. We never really are off. And as soon as those students leave, our team rushes in, they tidy up our schools. They look great. And so really a nice shout out to our facilities team, but really everybody, from everyone in the offices to those in the cafeterias just getting ready. It is a huge team effort and I'm just really excited about what this year holds in store. So that'll be the part of my report. The second part is going to be Ms. Marsden who's here. She's going to give an update to the board on our strategic communication planning. And I know she has a slide deck that we're queuing up. So Ms. Marsden, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight I'm just going to go over a couple of communications updates for you all. First will be kind of an update on just some of the recent efforts. And then we're going to go over the communication survey results and then just talk about how that's going to inform some of the long-term planning for the year and the strategic plan. So first I just wanted to give an update on Parent Square. So as you know, that was launched at the end of August. As of today, we have over 3,700 parents who have registered their accounts and over 1,600 who have downloaded the mobile app. We've gotten really great feedback so far from both parents and staff about the use of the app. It's really user friendly. We have two information sessions coming up for families. One on September 25th here in the district office at 7:00 PM and one on October 7th at 7:00 PM in the district office for multilingual families. So that'll be an opportunity for families to kind of learn about the platform, have their questions answered. We can maybe even troubleshoot some techno- technology difficulties they may be having. So we're really excited to kind of host them and get Parents Square more underway. And then just a couple of quick goals updates. So I actually wanted to update you on the heart award because we launched that nomination application last week and we already have over 50 nominations. And the nominees include teachers, bus drivers, really rolls across the district. And the nominators are everyone from staff members to parents, a couple of community members. So people must be sharing it out because I haven't sent it anywhere out in the community yet. So we're really excited to see that there are so many nominations. The write-ups about them are just really genuine and sweet. So we're excited to award those recipients with that later this month. The annual report and the staff newsletter are both district goals that are still on target to be published later this month with the annual report being digitally published with a postcard going to the community with the QR code to the full report. And the staff newsletter more being an internal communication device that we haven't previously had. It'll be monthly updates on things like important updates at the district level, departments, things of that nature. And then website, we've been working on this summer just to kind of have minor enhancements to the website. But the real focus throughout the year will be on updating the departmental pages. So the first one we're starting with is HR. We've already started working with our new supervisor of human resources to begin refreshing that webpage. We have some good ideas for recruitment efforts there. So that'll be kind of our first project as it relates to the website. Were there any questions about Parents Square, the goals updates, before I move on to the communication survey?
Teresa, you don't have to give a long update, but can you just maybe talk about two or three things that you updated on the website this summer? Just to help enhance the user experience and to grab some of that low hanging fruit and make things better.
Yeah, so one of the main things was that on the homepage, the district calendar wasn't really easy to find. So I put that in a place that was a little bit more accessible. And I also put instructions on how to filter the calendar by school because I know a lot of families weren't sure how you could do that. And they'd see everything K to 12 in all of our schools. So hopefully they're seeing that as the year starts, they can filter by whatever school their child is in and that's a little bit easier to navigate. The other thing was that our absence reporting previously, when you basically go to GVSD.org, you would have to navigate to each school's page to find out how to report an absence for your child. Now right on the homepage, there is an absence reporting button. So when you click that, it takes you to the district absence reporting page where they're from you. Where from there, you can select which school your child's in and quickly send that email or report the absence. So those were two kind of larger ones that we just wanted to make sure that at the beginning of the year, when things are a little bit chaotic, the calendar, absence reporting, parents know where to find them. So moving on to the communication survey, just as a reminder, this survey was facilitated in late April. We had it open for families for two weeks. And the goal was really to just inform long-term planning and give us a benchmark for where we stood so that as any progress was made, we could have something to reflect back on to see how far we come. We had 671 responses, which I was pretty happy with. You know, as far as the time of year, I think that it was a busy time of year. We could potentially move that up to the earlier spring so that it's not coming against that month of May. But I was happy with the 671 responses that we received from parents. So here's an overview of the results. There were 12 questions in the survey and the first eight were focused on satisfaction levels related to overall communication, frequency, timeliness, transparency, clarity and conciseness, communication about major goals and initiatives, two-way communication and responsiveness. As you can see from the results, most of the respondents fell within the category of agree as far as the majority of kind of where they landed. A lot of the responses between agree and strongly agree, the satisfaction level fell between 55 and 60-ish percent. So there were areas where there were some kind of disparity in the numbers, but nothing was an egregious shortfall as far as one question kind of standing out from the rest. But I'll talk about some of the areas where we'll focus on as far as those with the lower numbers of satisfaction. Then there were questions related to preferred communication methods. So email, text message, phone call, the website. That's pretty much in line with what I was expecting. The topics of interest that parents were most interested in were major district initiatives, safety and security and curriculum instructional updates. And then there was an opportunity at the end of the survey to provide an open-ended response to any improvements they'd like to see in communications from the district. Most parents just kind of reiterated some of the previously touched on topics like transparency, two-way communication. But some of the ones that I frequently saw that kind of weren't asked earlier in the survey were authenticity of messages, being a little bit more genuine in our messaging, inclusivity of different student populations and consistency across the schools. Parents wanted to see when going from school to school with their child, the same methods of communications, the same frequency with communications. So that when you transferred from building to building, it didn't feel like there was this big gap in communications. So this is just kind of a summary, those areas of strength where we saw some of the highest satisfaction levels, where the frequency clarity and timeliness of our messages. And some of the areas where we had that lower rate of satisfaction was the transparency, two-way channels and the responsiveness to questions or concerns. So once I kind of saw that those were the areas that we were receiving the lower scores, I tried to develop focus areas around those as far as long-term planning for the strategic plan. So the way that I developed those focus areas was bucketing them into community engagement and partnership, building brand through exceptional service and digital connection and accessibility. So each of these would be kind of a core pillar for the strategic communication plan with multi-year action steps that flow into it over the course of the three years of the plan. So with the first one being community engagement and partnership, I think that something that's really foundational to any communication work is developing a framework that has standardized protocols for major initiatives. So whether that's safety and security or an educational initiative, operational like facilities, showing that we're prepared and consistent with the way that we engage with our community through just a standardized framework will ensure that we kind of build that community trust so that we're not just doing something differently every single time there's a new major initiative. Considering that was something that parents are really interested in as far as our major initiatives, I think having a framework for this will really set the foundation for improving those communications. I also want to make sure we prioritize two-way communication channels. I know these are methods that we're already utilizing or have utilized in the past, but I think the key word here is to prioritize and not just view it as checking something off a box to engage with the community. So engaging in those kinds of methods where we're seeking out that two-way communication that's really thoughtful. And then as far as increasing community engagement and participation, being proactive about district challenges and successes with the community as well as developing standards and processes for community partnerships. I see that there can be some inconsistency about when we engage with certain groups, whether it's, you know, local organizations such as the library or PTOs and really trying to leverage those so that we all work together. And it's not this kind of, we could do this then, why can't we do it now type conversation? It's more of a mutual partnership. And then that second pillar is building the brand. So I know I talked about this back in the spring, but the brand development I definitely want to focus on in the strategic planning. The first step of that would be to develop that communication guide where there is established brand identity through things like font, logo, colors, even just messaging around, you know, when to use Great Valley School District versus GVSD. It sounds really small and silly, but standardizing that so that people aren't just saying GV or GVSD and just using it interchangeably. There should be a defined difference. And then from there, we'd be sharing it out with our staff so that they have those resources and materials to actually utilize it. And a step further from that, actually training them on the proper use of brand guidelines as well as a customer service training, just so that we kind of are all embodying what it means to be a Great Valley employee, not so much just in our digital materials, but when we interact with a parent or community member, all of that communication is viewed kind of from a linear lens of the district. So we want to make sure that it's not just using the proper logo and colors, but also how you interact with families in the community. And then the last piece of that would really be trying to expand. You know, the communications department is small but mighty, but it'd be great if we could get some staff members who are really interested in promoting their work. You know, I can't be in all seven buildings every day, but if teachers who want to highlight their classroom, want to be some kind of brand ambassador for the district, it could be a great way to engage staff so that we can promote the work of a district at a broader level. And then building out community groups like alumni. Parents Square can be great to leverage that. We can build out that groups through that platform. So that would be something that I definitely want to explore by year three of the plan.
I know some teachers are using Instagram, not open. You know, you have to be invited in depending on if your kid's in the class or whatever's happening, but it's been a really neat way to watch what's happening in a classroom and engage that way a little bit from afar. But so it's happening a little bit. So to bring it all under one umbrella would be great.
Yeah, and some teachers do a really great job of synthesizing what they're doing, whether it's through graphics or short video. So I think leveraging their creative skills too would be great. And then lastly is what I, the pillar that I named was digital connection and accessibility. So the first one is related to ADA compliance. So if you're not familiar, all public websites have to be fully ADA compliant by April 2027. Fortunately, Final Site, our website vendor does have accessibility checkers that keep us on track. But that said, it actually extends further than just our website. It's all digital materials, including social media. So we have to make sure that all of our content is accessible. And then what I'd like to do is create an accessibility guide for staff so that they know best practices when it comes to ADA accessibility. An example I use a lot is fonts. So Times New Roman is a serif font, which means it has little curls at the end. That's actually not recommended according to ADA compliance. Something sans serif, more of a block print is easier to read for those who are visually impaired. So just best practices for staff would be that guide. And then enhancing our platform presence, so developing strategic campaigns through Parents Square and social media. So kind of leveraging social media to our advantage for different ways to connect with families, a little bit of more structure and management of our accounts, because like you said, there are some at the classroom level, across groups and organizations within the district. And making sure that we're kind of more of a cohesive unit when it comes to our platform presence. And then also utilizing LinkedIn, which we haven't explored much in the past, but as far as the promotion of our staff achievements and recruitment efforts, I want to explore utilizing LinkedIn a little bit more frequently. And then the website user experience, this could probably be a 10-year plan, but being a little bit more proactive about the user friendliness of our website. A lot of parents are seeking quick snippets of information. So I'd rather they be able to find that than trying to put a really text-heavy informational piece that parents just don't have time to read. I know that, you know, when it comes to kind of updating a website, it's kind of a slow process, but I'd like to move forward with kind of cutting back so that we're not putting more and more on the website, but rather it's just high-quality content. And that can be information portals. So you're just getting those kind of snippet bullet point one-pagers and just overall enhancing that user-friendly experience. So next steps, this, as you can see, some of these topics and action steps were a little broad, but that's why I designed it's because a lot of them will have to require some thoughtful consideration for the action steps. So that's what I'll be doing this fall. In February of next year, I'll be presenting the full communications plan to the board for feedback with finalization in the spring. And then implementation would start for the July 26th school year for implementation through June of 2029. Any questions?
First, I just want to, like, what do they do when you're appreciating poetry, whatever? I'm picking up everything you're putting down and I love it. I love to see this, the vision. And I think we've been waiting a long time to kind of have somebody synthesize some sort of direction forward. So I really appreciate that. I wanted to just circle back to the slide that you had with the spread from the survey results and just ask you whether this sort of a spread is normal to see when you do these sort of survey results, meaning, you know, are you expected to have your strengths be in the 30% range? Or are we mistaking, just because that's the highest percentage we got, that that's a strength, but we should actually be better?
In my experience, anywhere between, I would say 55 and 65% is pretty on par with satisfaction levels. I admittedly think that the neutral category is kind of a hindrance here because it just allowed a lot of people to not say yes or no. So that's something that we could reconsider for the next survey. But yeah, in my experience, I think that a satisfaction level with the combined agree and strongly agree falling around 60% is a fairly good reading, yeah.
So I'll ditto Neha. I think it's fantastic to see this. My question is, is about crisis communication. So I know like this, this seems fantastic in terms of like day-to-day, the nuts and bolts of like kind of the expected communication. What about, and it maybe it's baked into here already, but you know, you know, we have crises of like all different varieties. And how, is there a plan, kind of a separate plan for that? Or is that kind of included in this?
Yeah, my intention was to include crisis communication in the initiative framework as far to part of that first pillar. So when it comes to crisis, I kind of identified as safety and security. And then there can be kind of facilities and then there can be kind of personnel. So I've kind of already started working through that this summer with Andrew Thurston as far as the safety and security piece. But yes, kind of having a framework for all of those pockets. And then of course, there's always going to be something that doesn't fall into any of those, but ensuring that we're prepared for that as far as the communications channels.
I'm still challenged with trying to manage the flow of information that is coming into me. But I am loving Parents Square. I love my daily digest. I like the way the app updates me. I think it's working. And I want to say thank you for the updates to the website because I think you hit some of the important things that parents need to see there and you've kind of added some clarity. So I look forward to kind of seeing that evolution as well. I am like, like Neha, I'm starting to get excited because I feel like we're heading in the right direction, even though it's going to be a process. I feel like we're at least at an understanding of where we want things to go and you're headed there. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right. Thank you so much, Teresa. I also am a big fan of Parents Square. I just delete my email. It's so nice. It's so satisfying. All right, moving on to section five, program. Looks like we have some curriculum updates.
Yes, those are going to be there for your consideration next week. Certainly let us know if you have any questions now. I know Dr. O'Toole can probably be the first line to answer your questions.
My question, Dr. O'Toole, is always looking at these. I love seeing curriculum development, first of all. I find it so interesting. When is this being implemented in the classroom? What's the timeframe? I think when I clicked on some of these, it was saying 25, 26. I may have missed further detail about it.
Yes, some of them will indicate on the actual administrative content, the implementation. So for example, 5.01 indicates November. 5.02 indicates January. And so they do have, as far as the advanced personal fitness, some of those units are starting because that is a new course at the high school now. So that is something that is beginning this current school year, depending on the cycle of when those classes are meeting. And then as, as it relates to the English academic, English curriculum, I'd have to get back to you on, on specifically. I think some of those are just some revisions that I know Dr. Beck shared tonight at the instructional subcommittee that the teachers were working on those to begin the process of implementing those. So I'll have to get-
It's not brand new, the-
No, no, that's not. No, the academic English curriculum is something that's happening during the school year. The data science are, are new, that's a new course that we're implementing. So yeah, we'll, we'll have to update as far as for next week, the specific timeline. You know, some of these, as we start implementing, you know, knowing if it's November or if it will be specifically December by the time the teachers are implementing. But we can, we can get more specificity for next week.
I mean, I am interested in dystopian fiction at that 12th grade class. I may audit that, but-
Interested in which one?
The dystopian fiction.
Oh, yes, yes.
Feels very apropos.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Other questions?
Steve, I have a question on this college essay narrative writing. That's new, right?
Yes. Well, college essay, Dr. Beck can speak more specifically to it. I know that our, our English teachers have worked to continue to work with students so that they have applicable college essay experience. But I'll let Dr. Beck speak to that.
It's, it's not a new thing. The timing of when they do it, depending on the level of the course they take, is new, but the way in which they approach it. The 12th grade English teachers actually have worked with our literacy coach to make those revisions based on feedback from students of prior years.
When you say timing, what does that mean exactly?
So some of our English classes do do some work at the end of the junior year. And then what we found is that the 12th grade academic level students gave us feedback and we surveyed all of them actually to say, coming back around to that draft and having some support to finish that at the beginning of the year was something that they wanted as a part of their writing process.
Great, I love that.
I, I can also answer Mrs. Guo's question too. Each of these, all of this work was done primarily in the spring and the summer with the August board meeting being as early as it was. Much of the actual fine details of the typing up and the formalizing was not prepared. So all of these units will be implemented this year. The, as Dr. O'Toole spoke to the Spanish for Heritage learners, you approved the first unit that has one teacher. He is working with one of our coaches and so he helped to develop that. That will come forward and is in advance, but he's working to write it and teaching it. The same is true for the advanced personal fitness. He did that work over the summer and then was still working in August. Again, we give teachers some flexibility. The 12th grade English, as I shared, not just the college essay writing and I spoke with that, spoke about that at the instructional tech subcommittee, all of those, their minor revisions, based on all of the survey work that we did with the students. And the two 12th grade English teachers who teach that course did, made those revisions and they actually worked the week of August 12th. So they didn't come to the board. And then same is true for the data science. And then the seventh and eighth grade math was that team of seventh grade teachers worked last year to try some things around instruction and then formalize that work this summer to come to the board. And the eighth grade was the tweaking of units to align with the core resource. So it's a unit adjustment of order, not necessarily changing the content.
All right, moving on to facilities, 601. What's happening with our facilities?
We'll have a facilities committee meeting on September 18th.
Okay.
And 6.02 is the lead in the drinking water results. We did get back the results. All of our buildings had a non-detectable response, which is great for our upcoming school year. And 6.03 is the facilities use report.
All right, transportation.
Under transportation, 7.01 is the first student contract renewal. And 7.02 is the driver and monitor approvals for Norcross and first student, first alt-drivers and monitors. The board approved the craft drivers last month of the August meeting.
Got it. All right, food service. I don't see anything there, I don't believe. Okay, and then technology, section nine.
Under technology, 9.01 to 9.06 are renewals for your review. And 9.07 is the learning without tiers quote. This is for kindergarten students to use for handwriting instruction. 9.08 is the FMX additional module. This is a prorated adjustment for the current system that we use FMX. It's a ticketing system that we utilize for staff to be able to put in like a help desk ticket. So we'll be adding a module for teaching and learning, for the teaching and learning department. Moving on to financials. Financials, under 10.01, the finance committee meeting does not have a report. It will be meeting in November, on November 3rd of this coming school year. 10.02 to 10.04 are also renewals for your review. 10.05 are the elementary field trips. This is for the timeframes of October through the beginning of November. We're bringing the field trips to you slightly different based off of the board's recommendation. We're utilizing a more streamlined and proactive approach to present the field trips to you ahead of the board meetings. to present the field trips to you ahead of the board meetings. 10.06 is edvative learning support for AI strategic planning. This is to enter into an agreement beginning October 15th and it will end on June 30th. This is to include guidance related to the benefits and risk of AI. 10.07 is an educational service contract with LearnWell Education. 10.08 is an educational service contract with Melmark School. 10.09 is an educational service contract with the Pathway School. And 10.10 is two educational service agreements. One is for the Royer Graves School and the Vanguard School. 10.11 are the budget transfers from the 24-25 school year. This is per section 687 of the school code to reallocate budget lines. 10.12 is the Charlestown Elementary School donation. This is a $5,000 donation for a partial reimbursement of the new sound system that was board-approved back in January of this, start of this year. In January, January 21st of the school year. That concludes the financial section.
All right. Can I just ask a question on 10.06? Is that support meant for the administration or for students?
Actually, it'll be for the administrators and we will be assembling a thick tank of 20 to 25 secondary teachers who will also work with the group. So we'll be developing that teacher capacity and then also getting training for the administrators.
All right. Nothing under other? And I don't believe there are any other committee reports under 12. Draft agenda for next week, which is a voting meeting, is there for everybody's review? Are there any public comments this evening, 1401? Come on down. With 30 seconds left, you'll hear an annoying beep, please keep talking.
Sherri Lawrence, y'all know where I live. This is my annual plea to the board and to the district to reexamine the, the situation at the middle school and the high school complex for the morning drop-off. This was the first year where we did not receive any documentation or recommendations on how parents should enter the complex to drop off the children. So the freshman parents had no idea, in my opinion, on which lane they needed to be in or where they needed to go. And so, you know, we gave it a week. This week, we've, my daughter and I have witnessed a lot of fishtailing into the high school complex where people just sort of create the train blocking off lanes of traffic, trying to turn into the high school. And with more and more construction vehicles on the road, we've seen dump trucks, we've seen larger tractor trailers, we've seen all sorts of vehicles not abiding by the 15 mile per hour speed limit. And with the seniors getting to park there for the first time, these are relatively new drivers and we're just seeing a lot of inexperienced people trying to do school drop-offs. When I brought this to Principal Capitola's attention during back-to-school night, the recommendation was just leave earlier, as she tells families every year, just leave 15 minutes earlier and you'll avoid a lot of this. Some families can't do that. And with more and more construction going on in town, we've got what's going on on Moore Hall Road right now. That's not slated to finish until spring, if this is real wood. Where in my neighborhood, we're going to be losing access to our main way to get onto Yellow Springs Road because of the highway construction. They're going to be blocking off one of the bridges and access to go underneath that bridge, which will tack on at least another 10 minutes of commute for us because we've got to do a longer commute around. More and more families are having this type of an issue. So the, what I would like to see happen is a better system in getting people onto the campus. I understand that there's a safety guard at the middle school, but the penalty for middle school students being late is far less than the penalty for high school students being late. And while the high school has been a little bit more generous in saying five late absences, or rather, late entries will land you a detention instead of three, seniors will now, if you get so many, will lose their parking- and sort of earned being a senior. I would think that student safety would be at the forefront and that having students safely enter into the campus in a timely manner will be, should, should take more of a precedent than just leave early. Leaving early isn't going to solve everything, but a better focus on getting students and families in and out of that complex Monday to Friday would be very beneficial. Thank you for your time. Oh, one other thing, cursive writing? My daughter's having to translate teacher notes for people because nobody can read cursive. So the faster you can get this cursive training for the students, the better. So thank you.
All right, the board met in executive session this evening and on September 3rd to discuss the potential purchase of property. And with that, section 1502, we will adjourn until next week. Thanks, everybody.